Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this special session of the Bloomington Common Council. This is Wednesday, October the 12th, and we will begin our meeting this evening by asking our clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Volin?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
Scambaluri?
Here.
Sandberg?
Here.
Rallo?
Here.
Flaherty?
Here.
Rosenbarger?
Here.
And Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, and to summarize tonight's agenda, this is the special session addressing our budget. So for legislation for second readings and resolutions, we'll hear ordinance 22-25, an ordinance fixing the salaries of officers of the police and fire departments for the city of Bloomington. And next, ordinance 22-26, an ordinance fixing the salaries of appointed officers, non-union, and AFSMI employees for all the departments of the city of Bloomington. And following that, ordinance 22-27, to fix the salaries of all elected as city officials for the city of Bloomington. These are all for the year 2023, of course. Followed by appropriation ordinance 22-2, an ordinance adopting a budget for the operation, maintenance, debt service, and capital improvements for the water and wastewater utility departments of the city of Bloomington for 2023. Followed by appropriation ordinance 22-3, appropriations and tax rates for Bloomington Transportation Corporation for 2023. Last item, appropriation ordinance 22-01, an ordinance for appropriations and tax rates establishing the 2023 civil city budget for the city of Bloomington. This will be followed by any announcements regarding our council schedule before we adjourn for the evening. So let us proceed with legislation for second readings and resolutions.
Madam President, I move that ordinance 22-25 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, and will the clerk please read?
Let's try that again. Ordinance 22-25, an ordinance fixing the salaries of officers of the police and fire departments for the city of Bloomington, Indiana for the year 2023. The synopsis is as follows: This ordinance sets the minimum and maximum salary rates for all sworn fire and police personnel for the year 2023 in accordance with council-approved collective bargaining agreements. Your committee recommendation is due pass 612. Thank you.
Madam President, I move that ordinance 22-25 be adopted.
Second.
All right, and who is here this evening to begin?
Thank you very much. I'll be very brief. Mayor John Hamilton, and you'll hear shortly from Human Resource Director Caroline Shaw. I think I just want to appreciate the attention to the budget tonight. It's a big night where I'm not going to go through it all again, but just reminding how important this is, how much we appreciate the support to bring the economic development local income tax, which has allowed us to do what I believe is an extraordinary and transformative budget, working to make sure we invest widely and in an unprecedented way in our personnel and our operations across the board, from public safety to all parts of the city government, as well to invest in an unprecedented way in sustainability, including our transit, of course, and climate action plan, as well to invest in an unprecedented way in inclusion and quality of life, including affordable housing, economic equity, arts, jobs, and others. And we really appreciate all the work that's brought us here through the many months and happy to answer your questions and comments, but if you have any for me now, that's great. If not, I'll hand it over to Human Resource Director Caroline Shaw.
All right, very good. Any questions for the mayor? Apparently not at this point, thank you.
Thank you.
And welcome, Ms. Shaw.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. Caroline Shaw, HR Director for the city of Bloomington, and it's nice to be with you this evening. If you recall, our last time together, I had a lot of information to share, and this evening I'm going to be brief, and I'm happy to answer any specific questions as needed. But this first ordinance that I'm presenting tonight is ordinance 22-25, fixes the salaries of officers of the police and fire departments. And if you have any questions for me about that, I'm happy to take them at this time.
All right, anything for Ms. Shaw? And again, just a reminder to the public that we have had a very thorough discussion about this in our preliminary round of the... Yes, Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Shaw. Can you remind us what the pay rate increase is per the union agreements with the firefighters and the police?
I'd be happy to. In the fire department, the contract that is currently in place will give them a 2% increase in 2023. And then the police department, as you know, you ratified a contract on May 18th of this year, and Mike Rooker, our city attorney, went through those details of that contract in very good detail. That contract raises the... This has not happened until January 1st of this year, this coming year. That contract will raise the rate for senior police officers by 12.67%, and officers first class by 13.17%. That doesn't include a lot of other additional pay they will receive in 2023.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions? And seeing none from council, we will go to the public to see if there's anyone here who would like to make a comment on the ordinance 22-25 for officers of police and fire departments. And let us keep our public comments to three minutes each this evening, since we have quite a few in chambers this evening. Anyone from our Zoom meeting?
I'll go ahead and invite anyone watching on Zoom who would like to comment on ordinance 22-25, to use the raise hand feature to let us know you'd like to speak. You can find that raise hand button in your control bar under the reactions tab or the more tab, or you can send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak.
And no one from chambers?
I see no takers on Zoom.
All right, very good. We are back to council for any final comments on ordinance 22-25. And seeing no comments from council, we will ask the clerk to call the roll on ordinance 22-25.
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, and that passes 900. Moving on now to the next ordinance.
Madam President, I move that ordinance 22-26 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, and will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 22-26, an ordinance fixing the salaries of appointed officers, non-union and AFSMI employees for all the departments of the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana for the year 2023. The synopsis is as follows: This ordinance sets the maximum 2023 salary for all appointed officers, non-union, and AFSMI employees for all the departments of the city of Bloomington, Indiana. Your committee recommendation was due pass 153.
Thank you.
Very soon. Madam President, I move that ordinance 22-26 be adopted.
Second.
All right, and back with us, Ms. Shaw, for a brief summary?
Yes, I will hit the highlights for ordinance 22-26, which sets the pay grades and salary ranges for appointed officers, non-union and AFSMI employees. The administration has budgeted a 5% increase for civil city salaries in 2023, and also two $500 payments for eligible employees. Finally, as you know, we're in contract negotiations still with the AFSMI union, and we hope to have a contract in place by the end of this year, and I'll be back before you to change the ordinance when that happens. 2017, or 2023, rather, the common law minimum pay rates are now $15.29 per hour, and that covers our temporary employees. And then, as you know, we've recreated some new positions, thanks to ED Lit and other revenue sources that we have in 2023, which we're really appreciative of. New positions in the community and family resources department, the office of the controller, engineering and fire, hand, and human resources, ITS, the parks department, the planning and transportation department, the police department and public works, also several positions in utilities. I'm happy to take any questions about any of those at this time. We also changed some titles of some positions, which I will... We've gone over that in great detail, and that's also my memo. And finally, there were some other housekeeping changes on the salary ordinance, where we've moved some positions into other areas within their division, with their department. And I believe there may be something else that we...
Yes.
Thank you.
Before we go to council questions and the public comment here, we do have an amendment that I believe we'll entertain right now.
Madam President, I would like to move amendment one to ordinance 22-26.
Second.
This amendment was prepared at the request of Human Resources, the Human Resources Department, to list a previously created position under the Department of Economic and Sustainable Development that was inadvertently admitted from the ordinance. And if there is any additional context?
I'm happy to explain that. As you may recall, in January of this year, I was before you amending the ordinance we just presented during the 2022 budget process, and we were adding a new position in economic and sustainable development to help with sustainability. And we inadvertently missed that when we were creating this ordinance this time. It was just an accident, and we thankfully someone else caught it, and here I am before you to add, to slip that one in as well, so I don't have to come back again to do that.
Okay.
So I appreciate you sponsoring our amendment.
Would there be any council questions regarding that omission, since we didn't hear about it before? All right, seeing no questions, any public comment on amendment one?
I'll go ahead and extend the invitation. This is an amendment one to ordinance 22-26. If there are any folks on Zoom that would like to offer comment, please use the raise hand button to indicate you'd like to speak.
No one here in chambers?
See, no takers on Zoom.
And with that, let's come back to council for amendment one. And if there is no further comment or question, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll on the amendment.
Councilmember Volin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, and the amendment passes 900. And now we are back to council for any questions regarding the ordinance as amended. Yes, Councilmember Rallo, and then Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Thank you. Ms. Shaw, I wondered if you could give us an update or status on negotiations? Have there been any meetings since our last council meeting?
I will defer to our lead negotiator, Corporation Council, Beth Kate. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry. No, you're fine. Good evening. Thank you, Councilmember Rallo. You wanted just an update on status of negotiations? Did I hear that correctly? Okay. So negotiations are ongoing. We have sent a number of dates to the union for further negotiation sessions in October and November, and actually, I believe today, those dates just went on the calendars of everyone. They were on our calendars already. My understanding is that the union will be able to meet during those times, too, so that's where we're at right now.
When do you think you might conclude those negotiations?
Well, I'm hoping to conclude them by... Before I go away on a vacation in November, mid-November, but that's the plan, is to try to get it done in the dates that we have set up. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I wanted to inquire about the $1,000 extra payment into $500 chunks. So are there any employees that are not eligible for that?
The sworn police officers are not eligible for that payment. And then dispatch is currently not eligible. We're working to get them eligible, our dispatch employees. As you know, their contract is... Not their contract, they don't have a contract. Their budget is set much earlier in the year, so we need to go back before their group and have that amended to increase that payment.
I'm sorry, so dispatch employees are currently not eligible, but they will be eligible?
Well, it's just not budgeted for, so they're not ineligible, but there's no money in their budget for that. And maybe Controller Underwood would like to jump in here and say that better than I just said. Their budget was set earlier this year, and we just need to work with their board to amend their budget, to add that payment for them.
So that is the intention?
That is absolutely the intention. I've talked to the mayor about that a couple of times.
Okay, great.
And there is Mr. Underwood joining us via Zoom.
Good evening, City Controller Jeff Underwood. Yes, as you know, the dispatch budget starts about 45 to 60 days before the city budget, because it has to get agreement between the city and county, and has to go to the policy dispatch board, and has to go then to the tax council subcommittee, and then to the city and county councils for approval. So it gets set well before a lot of decisions are made, so in this particular case, we'll be going back to get that amended to make the amendment.
I had a little bit of a hard time hearing you, Mr. Underwood. So you're saying that the intention is to appropriate additional funds for this purpose for the dispatch employees?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we just have to run it back through all the boards and commissioners that have to approve it, starting with the policy dispatch board.
Right, gotcha. And Ms. Shaw, so other than the sworn police officers, what about the fire department employees? Are they eligible for this?
Yes, yes, they are.
So was that in ordinance 22-25?
It is in there.
Sorry if I missed that.
No, it is in there as well, I believe.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, any other council questions? And seeing no additional council questions, we now go to the public. And if I could get a show of hands of how many people are here to speak in chambers on behalf of ordinance 22-26. All right, seeing a number of hands going up. If you all want to go ahead and queue up behind the podium, and again, three minutes per speaker, and if there's anyone at home that we can reach out to.
I will again extend the invitation for folks who are watching on Zoom. If you would like to speak on ordinance 22-26, please use the raise hand feature to let us know. You can find that in your control bar under the reactions tab or the more tab, and if you're not able to locate the raise hand button, please send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to comment.
All right, very good. Let us begin. Go ahead and state your name. Is there a sign-up sheet on the podium?
Yeah.
Okay. We'd like to have you sign in, if that's okay, too. State your name, and you will have three minutes.
Been here before, and there's been a lot said over and over and over. I'm not going to rehash what we've already talked about in the past. It's basically the wages that we're not getting. We're still losing employees.
Could you state your name? I'm sorry.
Steve Robertson. We don't have too many employees left. They're whittling down quite a few, and the wages... And without a contract right now, we've got people that don't know what their future is or what beholds for them in the city. And we're trying to get a contract, but we're having a hard time getting things squared away. But hopefully, the next time we come back here, we can say we have one. That would be a praise, you know? But with the budget is... There's a lot of money in the budget, and I would like to see a budget one time just for the employees. There's billions of dollars in this budget, and it goes for a lot of other stuff, and it don't go for the employees. It needs to take care of the employees. One thing in the budget, going to give city employees at town hall $500, not to drive their car to work? I have to scrape to even find gas money, you know? I don't quite understand that, what the purpose of that reason is. But, you know, we would like to counsel to send a message to the mayor on the wages. I know that Rallo has talked about he didn't think the 5% was enough, and I don't know if you got your message across or not. I have no idea. But if they're not going to listen to us, and they're not going to listen to you, I guess we're going to get what we get, you know? That's the way I kind of look at it. I don't know what's going on there. But he likes to spend a lot of money on beautifying the city of Bloomington, and that's fine. I'd have a problem with that, but his campaign speech is going to be, "Look what I did for Bloomington, but it cost me all my employees to get it done." And Bloomington will look nice for a long period of time until the trash, the streets, the sewage, the water, all that don't work no more, because guess what? We have no employees to take care of this. So what good is a good-looking city when you ain't got nobody to take care of it? And I think that we need to really stress to you guys that you need to really send a message to them, let them know that we need more money, because we're losing... We're losing three more people Friday from utilities, and we're just... They're leaving, and we don't have enough people hardly to do the job. And the people that are there are wore out, not getting compensated for their extra time. So I appreciate you guys. I appreciate you guys standing with us and standing behind us 100%.
Thank you, and you are at your time, Mr. Robinson. If I could please ask everyone in the chambers to not applaud at the end of the speaking so that we can just kind of keep on with it, and respect what everyone has to say, and just keep your display of approval to a minimum. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bradley Rushton. I am the active president of Local 2487 AFSMI. First and foremost, thank all of you members for supporting us in our endeavors to try to secure a meaningful conclusion to this contract negotiation. Since the last budget hearing, it's been two weeks ago, we have been offered scheduled appointments and dates that actually are after this session, and they lead into November. I would like to elaborate. Deputy Mayor Don Griffin has stated that you have always passed a budget before negotiations were concluded. Well, that's a correct statement with this administration. Passed contracts from January 1 of '04 to December 2018. All these contracts in previous administrations have been accepted and put into practice before budgets were finalized. The latest one that was submitted to the mayor for signature was in September. We can't seem to get any traction. I don't understand why, and I am beyond frustrated. They talk about the $225 million that is going to transform the budgets for the city of Bloomington. That's great, but it doesn't seem to be filtering down to its essential personnel. These individuals are all wondering what's going to go on with their futures. A lot of these people are hanging on by their fingernails, trying to get information that I can't give them by their rules. I want to divulge what is going on, what they're offering. And the first initial offer that we got was not an offer, it was an insult. And it just... Forgive me if I seem passionate, but it's irreprehensible, in my opinion. These folks, if we can't get something that's halfway decent, at least with the curve of the cost of living increase, you're going to see a lot of these people leaving. What are you going to do when one-third of your fleet maintenance technicians walk off the job? Because it's in the works, folks. I'm trying to stress this to the utmost degree. You're not going to have your fire trucks running, you're not going to have your police cars running, your garbage trucks, all your other facility vehicles. You're going to be behind the eight ball, and you cannot afford to pay $150 and $200 per hour to have these pieces of equipment fixed. And that's just fleet, let alone utilities and street and sanitation. These people need your support, and we appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rushton. And next speaker, if you will sign in and state your name.
All right, good. My name is Stephen French. First of all, I'd like to thank the board for all you guys do for the city of Bloomington. I'd like to see the raise of hands with the AFSMI employees, the fire department, police department. These people here are all the ones who take care of your water, your sewage, your trash, your recycling, your parks, your snowplow, your trees falling down, all these people. Without these people here, we have no water, we have no sewage. How many people want to leave if this contract isn't up to your liking? So out of the hands you just seen, now you see almost half these hands ready to leave. This is what this administration is doing to us. And as the mayor quotes and keeps saying, he says it over and over again, this new budget is transformative. Transformative is definition, causing or able to cause an important and lasting change in someone or something. What kind of change is going to give these people? Poverty? Half of them can't afford to get to work every day. You can't afford to have a $10 lunch. You can't afford to go out and eat. But a lot of people in here, they want to be here because they like it. They enjoy working for here, for this place. They've been here for 25, 30 years. This is all they ask for, is to get a good, nice contract. Other towns, local towns, they're doing way more than what this town is. I think the mayor and the council may need to put a little pressure on him to see what happens, hopefully make something come together. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any Zoom comments?
No, not that I see.
All right, very good. Go ahead. Sign in, state your name, please.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Morse. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for your dedicated service to the city of Bloomington. I have been a city employee for 23 years, 13 years at sanitation, eight years at street department. I'm currently your asphalt paving foreman. We are here tonight because this city administration needs to be held accountable for the pay gap that there is, and it's created such a labor shortage in this city that has put us such a strain that's felt throughout the city. You know, we're losing skilled labor to surrounding towns, municipalities, and to the private sector. You know, we have... I have an example of a gentleman that just left a month ago, went to the town of Elletsville. He's 24 years old, worked two years at utilities, one year at street department. We trained this individual. He walked out. He applied for a job as an operator for the city of Bloomington, and he applied for a labor position at the town of Elletsville. He took the job at Elletsville for $24 an hour. At the city of Bloomington, as an operator apprentice, the best he could do would be $22 an hour. Plus, he would have to wait one year before he would even see that raise. So him starting at the town of Elletsville for $24 an hour, I mean, he gave himself a $2 raise right off the bat, but he also is making more, starting out as a labor, for another town that the city of Bloomington trained. He's making now a dollar more on the hour than me, a 23-year city employee, and I have all the responsibility of a foreman on the job. I have to know how to operate every piece of equipment, I have to know every job on my crew, and I have to... My job has been made extremely difficult this year due to, we are seven individuals short in my department. The same job has to be done every day. That's trees have to be taken care of, the signs and signals have to be taken care of, paving happens, concrete happens. Seven individuals, so we're shifting people constantly. Some people have experienced road closures that would have never happened before because we are short-staffed. We have to close the road. These things are going to affect your future. If we can't take care of what we have now, when you annex stuff in in 2024, which this mayor has fought for, we're already stressed now. What are you going to do in 2024? So I'm here tonight, please help us, help the citizens of Bloomington. They expect a level of service that is going downhill very fast, so I'd just like to say thank you all for your time.
Thank you. And next up, if you could please...
How are you doing, City Council? My name's Alan Johnson. I've been at the street department for eight years. As of the union contract in 2021, we received a 2.5% raise. Cost of living per city councilman, Rallo, was 7% that year. 2022, we got a 2.5% raise. Right back to what Dave said last week, it was 9% this year. Projected rate next year is 7%. That puts us 18% behind what we were two years ago. We're not asking for a huge raise. We're not asking for a huge raise, we're wanting to stay where we were two years ago. So at $45,000, which I'm, that's what I make, at 18%, that gives me $8,100. Elletsville just got a $10,000 raise. We're not asking too much. We just want what, where we were two years ago. Cost of living, as you guys know, went through the roof the last couple of years. Our wages hasn't reflected that. And as everybody else said, we're losing employees left and right. Winter's around the corner, snow's going to be flying, and we will not have the employees unless we get something that can keep us where we were a couple of years ago. It's not like we're asking a whole bunch, we just want to be where we were two years ago. Thank you, guys, for all your support.
Thank you. Anyone else here in chambers wishing to make a public comment, or anyone on Zoom? All right, seeing no more public comment, we come back to the City Council for any final comments. Councilmember Rollo.
Thank you. I've been on the City Council, this is my 20th year, and I've never seen as many union employees turn out as have turned out this evening. For people watching at home, we have a nearly full lower gallery of people who are concerned about their futures. And I think I and, and many of my colleagues here have made it abundantly clear that we need to keep pace with cost of living increases. Anything, anything other is essentially a pay cut. Having been on the council for a while, I remember the 2008 economic crisis, and we were in dire straits at that time. The mayor, we met in an emergency meeting, budget meeting. The state had hampered our ability to essentially raise funds, and we were in a position where we couldn't raise salaries. But we didn't lose anyone, we didn't, we didn't make any firings. So that was extraordinary. This time around, we're, we have the funds to do this, we have the funds to keep pace. I agreed to the ED Lit principally because of that, because the police salary, and I thought that union and non-union city employee salaries would be, would be the main priority. There's a lot of priorities in the city, of course, and there are important priorities. But it seems to me the highest priority should be city employees. So I'm really mystified by why we cannot do this. Now, this, the council, you're making an appeal to the council, and we, we do have a fiduciary responsibility here, but we're not strong in the sense that we can vote up or down this budget, but we can't amend it. We can cut the budget, we can't transfer funds. So I'm in a predicament because I feel I must vote for this appropriation, because it is something. If it were to fail, then we would, the non-union employees would, would not get their 5% base salary increase and the other benefits that, that the administration is offering. But they're woefully inadequate. So I'm going to be prepared to vote no on non-essential appropriations coming in the next year, and I'm hoping that I can convince my colleagues to do the same, because that money would otherwise have gone to union contract and would go for non-union salaries. Now, I'm also frustrated by the fact that we don't have a contract and we're sort of flying in the dark here, you know? I should say I have to put my faith in the administration, but that faith has been really tried at this point. In fact, I, I have, I don't have much faith, but perhaps it'll be, perhaps it will work out. But in any case, the council does have some, some latitude, some power here in the coming year to deny this administration if they do not present a contract that keeps pace so that at least it doesn't resemble a pay cut. Because we're, obviously attrition is a problem here, we're losing institutional knowledge in the city. It's definitely got to be wear and morale, and I, I'm, again, I just find it quite a mystery why an administration that is, is flush with, with funds appropriated by this council cannot meet its obligation to keep pace with inflation. If the, if the mayor, the mayor's here tonight, so if the mayor would like to clarify why that is not the case, why I'm, I'm lacking in understanding why base salary increases cannot be honored just to keep pace. It's very frustrating to me. So I will be voting yes on this because I can't afford for this to, to go under. But I would appeal to my colleagues, our next ordinance is to fix the salaries of all elected city officials of the City of Bloomington. That's our salaries. I think we should vote no. I think we should vote no on that. How can we, in good faith, approve the fact that this budget tonight without a workable contract and yet give ourselves a pay raise? So I'll be voting yes if the administration would like to clarify. I'm sure that our council president would be willing to, to hear, hear him out. But I, I just have to express how frustrated I am and I, I feel for all the workers in this country. We're, we're clearly not responsible for the inflation that's occurring. Nobody is here, whether it's the Federal Reserve, or whether it's energy increases, or, or spending and money printing, et cetera, we can, we can distribute the blame, but we all have to work together as a team to make sure that families, employees are protected. So I'll, I'll be voting yes on this under duress. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments from council? Councilmember Bollum?
We used to adopt budgets as early as September, so a union contract completed in September in my first or second term, back in the aughts, might well have been completed at the same time a budget was passed. Although I agree that it would be better if the contract was completed before the budget. For the moment, this year, I'm okay with the order of operations we're currently on. On the other hand, while I agree that it's not really appropriate for the council to attempt to directly take part in union salary negotiations, I don't think that Councilmember Rollo is doing that any more than union members who have, who are present tonight and who have been present in recent meetings are. It's important that both my colleague and the public are speaking about their individual concerns and not just for their own sakes. In 2016 and 2017, I was involved in the development of the plan authored by Public Works to modernize the sanitation division. I edited the document, and I was in my 14th year of sitting on the board of the Solid Waste District. I was motivated by my eagerness to see recycling become more efficient and economically viable. But five years later, I regret to discover that the plan has fallen short. Sanitation revenues during the last year of the Orange Tag Program were roughly $800,000, while expenses were roughly $2.2 million. Now we're looking at $2.8 million of revenue on roughly expenses of $4.1 million. The deficit has not appreciably contracted since sanitation modernization was implemented five years ago. These numbers don't reflect this year's dramatic inflation either. There is a structural deficiency in the plan that collectively the city conceived five years ago. And we can't look at the problem with sanitation in isolation, as some employees have mentioned tonight. It's indicative of systemic concerns I have about Public Works that require this council's attention. Even if the administration had completed union negotiations before tonight and had somehow funded, funded that contract, it wouldn't address the problem that I see. For me, the issue this year, the real issue, is not this salary ordinance. It's the ordinance the administration intends to bring that will increase sanitation rates, which were set too low five years ago to meaningfully fund the plan. I'm aware of the emergent problems that happened when we bought arms that were retrofitted to trucks, the difficulty that certain bins create for the operators of those trucks, the way that members of the public were shown how to, to use the system that would make a meaningful difference in the way that employees managed it. The big question is going to be how much the rates increase and at what pace. They have to increase, is one thing I can say, is the rates have to increase, not just because some of us want to see that deficit eliminated because it's inequitable to homes that don't benefit from the system. They have to increase because there is a bigger, more structural problem that involves mostly Public Works, but that's represented by our efforts to modernize sanitation. Don't get me wrong, either, we needed to do that plan, we needed to modernize sanitation. But I don't think that this salary ordinance was necessarily, I mean, the administration could have budgeted more for it. Again, I, I don't find fault with the order of operations right now, but I do recognize why Councilmember Rollo has noticed it so many, we've had more, I mean, I've served almost as long as him, and this is the first time I've seen this many union representatives here, too. They're not just here for their individual reasons they're here, whether they know it or not, because the city collectively needs to look at the structure of our system and to overhaul it. So I'm going to vote yes tonight, but I am very eager to see the ordinance that the administration intends to bring to increase sanitation rates, that we can always pass an appropriation ordinance in arrears, and we do that on a regular basis. We have brought ordinances out, this is an appropriation ordinance that we're hearing tonight. If the contract results in more than we budgeted for, the administration will bring an appropriation ordinance to fund it. But before they can do that, we need to know where those extra funds are going to come from. So with that, I'll be voting yes tonight, but again, I am, I'm hoping that we're going to see that rate ordinance before the end of the year. I am grateful that it is not subject to IURC approval and that therefore we are free to set rates that escalate over time and not simply a one-time rate that we have to review every three years or every four years. And the message we can send from effectively escalating sanitation rates ought to send a message of comfort to those who believe that they are insufficiently paid. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. I, I just want to say in support of the, the Ask Me Union folks, we're not, you know, we're not privy to the specifics of what's going on in negotiations, but I really do support the efforts for, you know, a fair and equitable pay that keeps up with the cost of living. You know, I would really encourage the administration to, to look at that really and compensate y'all fairly. It, it's just, there's been tough times, cost of living's gone up for everybody. We're just, you know, every, everybody's, it's a ripple through the economy, so I was a union member for, for a long time in my life, and it's just an important thing. And, and when you look at the, you know, workforce, when there's a lot of turnover, then there's, something's going on. And, you know, me, I've lived in Bloomington for a while, I don't, I don't want you to leave. You've all done a fantastic job of doing all the services that we depend on. So I really support your efforts, I want you to be fairly compensated, and so thanks a lot for all your efforts. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else from council? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah. I think that my colleague, Councilmember Rollo, explained very well kind of the predicament that we're in, where we, we want to support the employees that do the essential work for the city, which you all do. But at the same time, we are not privy to the negotiations, and the ordinance in front of us now, if we were to vote no, then the non-union employees wouldn't get a raise, and it would revert to last year's salaries or this year's salaries. So that would not be a good outcome either. So I will be voting yes, but I urge the administration to do right by our employees. We have several new employees, non-union employees in this ordinance. We need to first prioritize the people who have been working diligently and dedicatedly to the city, I'm sorry, working diligently for the City of Bloomington. You all need to be prioritized before we start hiring new people. And so I urge the administration to come to an agreement to maintain the great employees we have, because that is essential. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenberg?
I plan on voting yes tonight, but also with, I would say, great hesitation there. I am encouraged to hear from corporate counsel that hopefully there can be a new agreement by mid-November, a month from now. I am discouraged to hear from the Ask Me president that it seems like there's a very big gap in where the parties are right now. I, I am on the same page as Councilmember Piedmont Smith and Councilmember Rollo that I think the best step forward for us as a council is to approve this and show our support in, if we want, or of course, like, I'm not speaking for everyone, but in any way that we can, or in any way that I can, for the union and your ability to collective bargain. I would say, I mean, in my ideal world, if you work for the City of Bloomington, you also get to live in it because, you know, you find it to be special in some way, and it, it makes me pretty sad to think that, you know, you're here, but you can't afford to live here. So that is very important to me, that we pay all of our employees a wage and a salary that lets you live in the city where you work. I worked for the National AFL-CIO for several years, so I, I really, really, really believe in the, the power to collective bargain and negotiate as a group. And I believe in those, the process and the tools that are available to you to negotiate. And so I think using the tools that you have at hand, kind of like without me getting involved with my vote on the budget, it, you still have a lot of options out there. I mean, if, I guess I think if there aren't enough employees to do the work, then the work won't, won't get done, and that's very compelling to change the wages, right? And there are some other things there. So, I mean, this is the very roundabout way to say, I very much support you all in your negotiations and encourage you to do what you need to do there, and I will be voting yes on this tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for your comments over the last week since tonight. I think, yeah, Councilmember Rollo actually, you know, summed up some of the challenges in, in a pretty clear way. I, I remain, like I think a lot of us do, concerned about employee retention and compensation in the face of inflation, and I think that applies across all our union employees as well as non-union employees, and there's different mechanisms and structures by which, you know, the council can affect, or the administration works with those different groups, whether it's collective bargaining or other processes, to, you know, adjust salaries. And I know the mayor is proud of, you know, the, the efforts they have made with 5% increase bonuses, you know, savings match and other things like that, that are, that are, you know, an appreciable increase in, in benefits for non-union employees and contained in the salary ordinance and other components of the budget. And I hope that the union contract, you know, gets to a point where, where folks are satisfied with that. It's, it's, I, I worry that, that we need to get to a place where you all are satisfied with, with the, with the contract, you know, that's arranged, because for all the reasons you've stated, you know, we, we only are harming ourselves if we can't retain employees. But when it comes to collective bargaining, there's a very prescribed process and limited role that we can play. You know, the, the collective bargaining units of, of Ask Me and of, of the, the city You know, the collective bargaining units of AFSMI and of the city are well-defined. The council does not have a role or a place in that, at least in terms of negotiations. Where we do have a place is in approving a salary ordinance update that would reflect any agreement. And I think we've made clear through past meetings that there's no question that the funds are available for the coming year to appropriate any agreement that has reached between AFSMI and the city of Bloomington. So the money in terms of appropriations for next year's salaries, any cost of living adjustments, one-time fees, anything like that is absolutely available and can be covered. And no doubt, this council would approve any salary ordinance update that, you know, the AFSMI union signed and agreed to. I think Councilmember Rallo also brings up a good point, that if it doesn't get to a place post-negotiation where the council is satisfied with where we are either, you know, we may increasingly be involved in other ways of trying to, you know, make sure that we get to where we need to with respect to employee retention and compensation. I don't want to leave out non-union employees out of this conversation entirely, because I think there's an important element there, too. The council actually received an anonymous U report from what I assume to be a non-union employee at the city of Bloomington earlier today, you know, concerned about the same things you all are, you know, not being able to afford to live—to live here, concerned about even inequities with things like the payment assistance programs that are available to some employees, but not others at the city of Bloomington, concerned about not having a representative in the union. So there are limits to every type of employee in terms of what you can negotiate and bargain for, and the processes are imperfect. And so we're left, you know, dealing with that at some level. I noted last time we talked that, again, any contract that's agreed to, we would then be contractually abound in future years to appropriate—you know, adequate funds. And if that means cutting other programs or whatever it is to meet that commitment, that's what will be done. Once the agreement is in place, there's no question that it will be covered. It's not like any appropriations in this year's budget will somehow limit or make that not possible. I think the one last thing I'll say is that I think I have interest in continuing to dig more deeply into benchmarking our salaries and competitiveness with, you know, with surrounding governmental units and private sector. You know, we've heard anecdotes to that effect. I've heard that from—from city staff at times, too, that, you know, we used to take employees from the county, so to speak, that would come from the county to the city, and that that's, you know, going the other direction more commonly now and things like that. So that to say, you know, again, like my colleagues, concerned about retention, looking in the coming year to get more information, more quantitative data about those retention challenges, about salary competitiveness, benchmarking, also gender and racial pay equity considerations, and just making sure that we're really digging into the weeds of those issues so that we can, you know, positively affect them where possible. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. And I really want to thank all union members for being present this evening. I think in the last couple of weeks, I've mentioned some of you that were here, of our support for working people's unions, for lack of a better term. For 33 years, I worked at Indiana University, and I also think I mentioned I worked hand-in-hand with AFSMI Local 832 on that campus. Maintenance folks, custodial folks, you know, some kitchen people. And I know there's differences. You can negotiate here, you don't here. I mean, I get all that. But I think what's common is the feeling of not being appreciated. Okay? I'm not saying the feelings and the facts congey all the time. I am aware of that feeling. I also heard earlier that if we don't pass this budget, then that would show the administration somehow that we take all this serious, and it'll put pressure on them. I think some of my colleagues have clearly mentioned that that's really just not how it works. For an example, if we don't pass this proposed budget by the time that we have allotted, then we refer to the previous budget. Okay? I want to remind you, that previous budget will not have anything to do with the local income tax increase that we've approved. There are some other revenue streams that will not be able to be used or considered in the next budget proposal. So if we were to do that, then not only do you don't have an opportunity to keep pace, trust me, you're going to take two or three steps back based on last year's dollars. So that's not what we want, I don't think. However, the way we—or I can speak for myself—and I don't know if I want to say "put pressure," but how we emphasize to administration that we want fair and competitive wages through the negotiation process is to simply tell them that when we have discussions. I mean, I've talked to the deputy mayor, I've talked to the mayor, talked briefly with the chief negotiator, our corporate counsel. I just want this to be fair negotiations upfront, get a fair wage and salary so that we don't have this feeling of being totally unappreciated. And trust me, we hear you. We hear you. We are limited in some of the things that we can do. I almost want to make some comments about the trash rate increase, but that is a total different thing, has nothing to do with this ordinance that we were talking about tonight, and that is a conversation better suited for another day in my regard. I do want to address what we have here and the expectations that we've set with the city staff, the administration that's doing the negotiation. And it has to be done in a manner so that not to interfere or unduly influence the negotiations. I understand that that's—if it's not illegal, it's damn near immoral, and we can't really do that. But there's nothing that I can't say, "Listen, I think this is what we need to do. These are my thoughts." I'm involved with another organization. We have four employees, and years and years ago, we tied their rate increases to the COLA, cost of living allowance. So it's tied there. I heard someone mention the—what COLA is going to be next year projected and maybe even the year after. We are aware of that, and we are prepared, and trust me, we don't have a whole lot of money in this organization I'm working with, but we understand the fair salary and what adjustments we'll have to make in order to meet that COLA, be it 7% or 8%. I've heard a couple of numbers, but I haven't seen the actual number from the government yet. But it's a lot higher than what we're used to, and we will take care of that. I expect that our negotiations, again, without influencing or trying to say the wrong thing, will be reflected around that. The administration that I know, and I've heard some things, I don't think that they want you all working for, you know, 10 bucks an hour or less than what you're worth. Again, if I feel unappreciated, I may think that, but I don't believe that. So I'm interested in hearing how we can negotiate. Hopefully, there's an agreement. And I hope you all have heard how this body—I think I can speak for the majority of us—are supportive of you and your negotiations and your efforts to get a fair and equitable salary. And that's really all I can tell you this evening. I will plan to support this ordinance, mainly because if we don't, then we don't have the increases, we don't have the revenue streams to even negotiate anyway. If we don't pass this, negotiations stop tomorrow, trust me on that, because there's no money. So I anticipate that this will continue. I also anticipate hearing sometime, hopefully in the near future, a settlement and agreement that at least everyone is happy, we feel like we can afford it on this side, there's a feeling of appreciation, and I can pay my bills and support my children on this side. So that's my comments for this evening. Thank you all for being here, and we'll get through this.
Thank you. Councilmembers Gamble, Lurie?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the discussion tonight. You've heard my colleagues make some very good points. One of my takeaways from this discussion, historically, I've used the term "basic city services," and I don't think I'll ever use that term again. I think I'm going to use the term "essential city services" instead. As I hear people talk about what it takes to manage and maintain a fire truck, that doesn't sound very basic to me. As I hear about those of you who are responsible for snow removal and what you have to plan to do with all the equipment we have to get that done in a timely way, that doesn't sound too basic to me. That sounds essential. So I'm going to change my own thinking in that regard. I also want to acknowledge some of the conversation that we've already had here tonight about the limitations in our role. I am sensitive to the limitations placed on us in terms of inserting ourselves into negotiations. But one of the takeaways that I hope members that are constituents here and that members here tonight in chambers here is the degree to which many of us on councils have emphasized essential city services. We are indeed characterized often as a progressive city that does a lot of—that has a lot of very ambitious goals, and that is a good thing. But I think you've also heard several of us consistently over the past several years place an emphasis on essential city services, too, and a reminder that if those aren't taken care of, not much else really matters. So I would convey that as well. The other thought I would convey, too, is the interconnectedness of financial decisions that we make in this city. We are called throughout the year—budget is obviously the largest one we make, but we are called upon to make financial decisions throughout the year in one way or another, and those financial decisions are interconnected. So as we talk about trash rates, as we talk about other appropriations, I would offer the assurance that many, if not all of us, are certainly going to be keeping in mind the investments we make in our staff and in our employees. So thank you for being part of that discussion. Thank you for enriching some of my thought on a lot of this as well. I will be, like many of my colleagues, I'll be supporting this particular salary ordinance and watching very closely as these negotiations move forward. So thank you.
Thank you. As I look out and see all of your faces, I want to thank you all, especially those that have taken the time to sit down with me and explain in more detail about how essential your work is. I know a stack of paper about that high was shared with me about what it takes to repair some of these very expensive fire trucks. They're, you know, exotic pieces of equipment that you can't just jerry-rig and fix them. You've got to have some expertise to know how to do that. When I hear things like the road closures that may be impacting our residents and our constituents because of the fact that we are short-staffed—and I'm well-aware of the short-staffing in other areas of the city from my discussions with the police department, also with the fire department. Now, we're talking to you, our very valued AFSMI employees, and when we talk about essential services, we're also talking about non-union employees. Those services are essential, too. And so you've heard from all of us up here that we are not going to not vote yes on this ordinance, because to do so, we're the fiscal body. It would be fiscally, really, quite astonishing and irresponsible. That said, I want to look in all of your faces to let you know that I'm making a personal appeal to you. I don't want you to leave the city of Bloomington. I know that the public sector is not in a position to pay you the same amount that you can get out there in the private sector, in the free market. I'm hoping against hope—well, no, I'm actually very hopeful—that this contract negotiation will be a give-and-take, and you will be able to get satisfaction. Make no doubt about it, the money will be there to honor that contract once you've reached it, and this council will wholeheartedly support it if it is satisfactory to all of your members and to the administration bargaining team, because that's what it is. It's a back-and-forth. It's a negotiation. We've stated up here that it is not our role to be a part of that negotiation, but it is a part of our job to let you know that you are appreciated. We do see you, we want to invest in you, and we want you to stay with us. And we will do—I will make a commitment to make sure that the culture of this workplace, not only for you as AFSMI employees, but for every employee here, is a positive place to work with good benefits, good spirit. I've heard from so many of you how, you know, you're doing this, those of you that are sticking around in spite of the fact that people are hitting the exits, you're sticking around for each other, because you know how hard it is when you're having to work a tough job that requires experience and skill sets, and you're having to do it with a skeleton crew. That's tough. And I want to thank you for hanging in there with us, and I want to thank you for keeping the faith with the bargaining process. And I want to give you all our assurances as a council that we do see you and we want to invest in you, and we want you to stay and be in the public service of the city of Bloomington. Thank you. All right. With that, are we ready to call the question on ordinance 22-26? I believe we are, so will the clerk. Please call the roll. And this will be ordinance 22-26 as amended.
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Scamble, Lurie?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Sims—er, Smith, I'm sorry.
Yes.
And Volin?
Yes.
All right, and that passes 9-0-0. And if I could please ask everyone, if you're going to be leaving chambers right now, please do so quietly so we can get on with the rest of our schedule. Thank you.
Madam President, I move that ordinance 22-27 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. And will the clerk please read? Want to wait a minute? All right, I think we have order in the court. All right. Ordinance 22-27 to fix the salaries of all elected city officials for the city of Bloomington for the year 2023. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance sets the maximum 2023 salary rate for all elected city officials for the city of Bloomington. Your committee recommendation is due pass 530.
All right. Thank you.
Madam President, I move that ordinance 22-27 be adopted.
Second.
All right. And if we can have just a real brief report here.
Good evening, councilmembers. And for my third salary ordinance presentation this evening, this is the one that sets your salaries and includes a 5% increase. I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
All right. Any questions? And actually, I do have one. I know in the past, this is a kind of an awkward budget to pass. We're up here voting for our own salaries, as it were, but could you talk a little bit about why it is recommended from an HR standpoint? Why—it's basically whatever the non-union employees are getting is basically what is elected officials are getting, right? And can you talk a little bit about why that is a useful formula, if you will?
I would say consistency is helpful. And if you recall, back in 2016, 2017, we conducted a compensation study for all city employees, and you—some of you were still on the council back then, and you all withheld taking those adjustments until after the election year, which all of you did that, including the mayor and the clerk. And that was, I think, smart on your part, but if you don't take your increase each year, you'll be farther behind with the compensation study that we performed a few years ago.
Right. And so that's just a matter of just with COLA, you know, keeping up, as we've heard a great deal about keeping up here. So thank you for kind of giving that in context, because there are extenuating circumstances. But for the most part, we do want to keep it consistent. That's correct.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Scamble, Lurie?
Yes. And could you give us—a remind us of the total cost of those increases across nine council members?
For this year?
For this ordinance?
I'd have to do some quick math. So I can get my phone real quick and do some quick math, or if the controller is there with his magic—
Is Mr. Underwood handy with the actual numbers here as to what the increase will look like? If you want to take a minute. Maybe we'll come back. Does anyone else have a question in the meantime?
There he is.
Oh.
And he's gone.
He's gone.
And I could run back to my—to my chair over here and calculate it for you really quickly. I don't have last year's ordinance, but your current salary as a council member is $20,146. I don't have last year's ordinance, but your current salary as a council member is $20,146. And if we take 95% of that, that would reflect what the salary was previous in this current year, and then that amount times nine would be the amount.
Okay.
Make you do the work for me. I just don't have a calculator. I used to be really good in math, but I'm a little rusty these days.
So we're talking about a raise on a $20,000 salary. We're talking a raise of about...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have my phone on me.
I can do math on your pressure.
Thank you.
About $1,000. So we're talking about $1,000, so we're talking times nine, times 10. So we're talking about, the total implications of this 5% increase on this ordinance are about $10,000.
Sounds about right to me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and I will just say I've never had so many questions on your ordinance. Next time we're prepared. Forgive me.
Anyone else have a question?
Just a point of information, this ordinance also sets the salary for the mayor and the city clerk, so the fiscal impact is not limited to just council members.
Right, right. All right, any other questions? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I'm sorry, Ms. Shaw, you said that there, you reminded us there was a compensation study. Was that 2017?
It was, it was a couple, yeah, it started in 2016, and I think we finally had the results for electeds in 2017, and then the unions maybe in 2018. It was a huge compensation study, and it took a lot of time.
And then we didn't implement the recommendations for elected officials until 2019?
The election year.
1942?
That sounds about right. I could look it up and confirm that and get back to you, but that sounds about right. We kept, we held off every year, even though we were adjusting, phasing in the adjustments for the other positions that required adjustment. Not all positions required adjustment, and we held off on yours until after that election year.
Yeah, that's what I remember. Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions from council? Seeing none, we will go to the public. See if there's anyone out there in Zoom who may want to make a comment, or here in chambers.
I will extend the invitation for folks watching on Zoom. If you'd like to comment, please use the raise hand feature to let us know. You can find that raise hand button in your control bar under the reactions tab or the more tab, where you can send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to comment.
All right, and if we don't see any hands popping up. Oh, we do have someone in chambers. State your name, and you have three minutes.
Am I good to go? Is this close enough? My name is Dave Askins with the B-Square Bulletin. Some of you may know this. I'm trying to popularize the idea of asking questions during public comment time, as a reporter might. So here I go. Councilmember Rallo talked about the possibility of voting no on this ordinance, voting it down, and I'm just wondering what the actual impact would be of a failed vote on this ordinance. As I understand the law, it's not possible to reduce the salary of an elected official, like ever, so I would assume that you could still get paid based on last year's salaries. But I think it would be useful for everyone to understand what the impact of voting no on this, because I don't think it would mean that none of the elected officials get paid, but maybe I'm wrong. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone on Zoom?
No, not that I see.
All right. Let's come back to council. If anybody has any additional questions or comments, councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, Ms. Shaw or Mr. Underwood, can you explain what would happen if this ordinance did not pass? Would we revert to just the same salaries as in 2022?
Jeff Underwood City, Jeff Underwood City Controller, my understanding is yes, you would revert to last year's salary.
Okay. Thank you.
Corporation council.
All right, additional questions?
And to follow up on that, and what would happen to the funds that would otherwise be used for an increase for elected officials?
They would be...
Are there restrictions placed on where those funds could be used?
They're category one, so they could only be used in that fashion. And any monies that are not utilized in a budget regardless of the classification, we'll revert back to the fund that they were budgeted in.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Volin?
I have a question for our council. Mr. Lucas, I understood from your predecessor in this role that the council cannot bind itself or an ordinance like salaries for more than a year at a time. So if, in the past, for example, I've said that in the next term of council, members should be paid more or less, I was told that that was not viable, that we can only do it from year to year. Can you comment on this?
I don't know that I've given that question much thought. I would trust the interpretation of my predecessor. I think that may be true of most multi-year expenses. The city, you know, issues bonds or other obligations beyond the current budget year, but in most of the budget year, you're appropriating funds for the coming year. So I agree with Mr. Underwood, the, if this ordinance were not to pass, which I think under state law technically there's a December 31st for a passage of this salary ordinance, you cannot reduce the salaries that you currently receive for any elected officials. I can't think of a mechanism to pass increases beyond next year. I'd need to look into that.
Yeah, it's, I mean, I don't care who, I mean, it would have to come from the administration to increase our salaries, but it's more a question of binding it for a term as opposed to by year. And if we can maybe get some research into that, that would be great.
Happy to look into that.
Thank you.
All right, any additional questions before we move on? Councilmember Rallo?
I have a comment.
Okay. Go ahead.
Well, clearly, referring to the last appropriation, I've had a continual sense of frustration with this budget regarding salaries. And so I thought an appropriate response would be for us to not approve an increase for ourselves, but, you know, that's up to the council. And it was, it's fallen on the mayor to increase city employee salaries or not, to the extent that I think is necessary. But I also have to consider the fact, and I was a bit, you know, inattentive to this, that this also includes the city clerk's salary, and she doesn't bear any responsibility for the policy set by the administration. And so it would essentially reduce her, wouldn't reduce her salary, but, I mean, with cost of living increases, it would. So I'm going to reverse my position at this point, vote for this, but I will adhere to, as councilmember Flaherty said it better than I did earlier, is to evaluate future appropriation ordinances relative to what we see come, in the coming months regarding the contract, which is, I mean, we don't know at this point, but hopefully we have, we hope that it is appropriate for the challenges for city employees. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, and I will go next. I usually wait till last, but I'm really grateful to hear you, councilmember Rallo, make that reversal of your earlier statement, because I, too, was giving this quite a bit of thought between the last discussion and this one, thinking that if it were just me, it would be easy to maybe stage a protest vote here, but it isn't just me. It's my colleagues, it's the clerk, it is also the mayor, and so when this affects more people than just ourselves, I think it is prudent to go ahead and follow the formula that our HR director has explained to us as to why we keep the same cost of living increase as non-union employees when those formulas are set. So I will be voting yes on this. Clerk Bolden, do you have a comment?
I was just going to say, I appreciate you thinking of my salary as well. Is there a possibility, if you feel that strongly about it, for amending the ordinance, to remove your salaries from it, so you could just vote on your salary separately? No, I do not wish to further complicate the matter.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, could the question not be divided, Mr. Lucas, so that we can have two separate votes? That would allow Mr. Rallo to vote whatever his conscience is and separate the council's salaries from the clerks and the mayors?
I'm looking at State Code 36472, which calls for the legislative body to, by ordinance, fix the annual compensation, and that may be why Mr. Sherman believed this was an annual action of all elected city officials. I'd want to give the idea of dividing the question more thought. I would not recommend doing that tonight. I think this state statute calls for the council to set the compensation of all elected city officers. I don't know that that means you have to do that in one action, but certainly we'd be doing things on the fly if that was something you wanted to pursue.
I mean, I'm just trying to first determine whether it's logistically possible, but it sounds like it's... Sorry, go ahead.
The council, if it wanted to postpone action on this item in order to arrange it so that you could vote separately, I would recommend that rather than trying to divide the question in on the fly right now.
Separately to be addressed this evening or at a later date?
At a later date.
Well, there we have it. Madam Chair, thank you.
All right, any final comments? Councilmember Scambaluri?
A question, actually, if I may?
Yes.
And would that take the form of, were that a strategy people want to pursue this evening to take 22-27 and address it at a later date? That is a motion to postpone?
Yes, that's one option, yes. Motion to postpone to a particular date would be the most effective way.
All right, any other final comments? Councilmember Volin?
I'm not sure that, I think that councilmember Rallo's concerns are worth postponing this for. I don't plan to vote against this ordinance, but I do want to say, and I think that this year, tonight, is the appropriate time to say that, I think that the salaries of elected officials should be negotiated like union contracts, and the term is equal to the term of office, and that this is a negotiation and it gets voted on here. If we were, we should be able to say that in 2022, the salaries for council members in the 2024 through 2027 term will be a certain amount or will escalate a certain amount. But that way, every member of the public will, including the people who would run for office, would know exactly how much that people are going to get paid. And the reason I say this is because, again, in the past, I have said, well, it seems reasonable to bind future councils, but again, Mr. Lucas has pointed out that the statute says annual, and it would require statutory change. But, you know, like, everyone running should know what the salary is going to be, and the reason I say that is because I have increasingly agreed with Julie Thomas, the county commissioner, who has advocated strongly at the county level for a commissioner pay that is enough to make a living on. We are increasingly busy as city council members. There's enough attention that members of the public demand of their elected representatives that this job could be full-time. But because it's not full-time, you fairly have to be somebody with enough means to get by without that salary. It should at least pay a living wage, which would be about 50% more than we're going to get paid in 2023. So until that change happens, I don't think we have much choice but to continue on, but I think that that maybe best articulates how our salaries should be negotiated, maybe not even quadrannally. Every elected official, their salary should be set for the duration of their term. It can escalate during their term. They can, like, again, like any union contract, they'll have a certain percentage in one year and next percentage in another, but we should be encouraging at least something nominally approaching full-time pay, so that it's imaginable that somebody could serve in this job and do this job full-time. But having said that, I'm going to vote for the ordinance. Thank you.
Any other comments? And seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll on ordinance 22-27?
Let's see. Councilmember Scambaluri?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
And Sims?
Yes.
Thank you. 9-0-0, that passes. Now we are ready for our next appropriation ordinance.
Yes, Madam President, I move that appropriation ordinance 2202 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And will the clerk please read?
Appropriation Ordinance 2202, an ordinance adopting a budget for the operation, maintenance, debt service, and capital improvements for the water and wastewater utility departments of the city of Bloomington, Indiana for the year 2023. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance approved by the Utility Service Board in August of 2022 sets the water and wastewater budgets for 2023. Your committee recommendation is due pass 9-0-0.
Thank you.
Madam President, I move that appropriation ordinance 2202 be adopted.
Second.
All right, we are ready for a presentation.
Good evening, council. This is Vic Kelson, utilities director. I'll be very brief. Our 2023 budget for the utilities department strives to expand climate action, expand our sewer capacity, optimize our drinking water quality, continue our water main replacement program, finish off the Hidden River project, and modernize our interim processes. Over our three utilities, Water Works, Sewer Works, and Stormwater Utility, our total budget is around $46 million. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
All right, very good. Mr. Kelson, any questions regarding utilities? Councilmember Volin?
Yes, when is the next rate case coming before us?
We will be bringing a rate case for the Sewer Works and for the Stormwater Fee in November. I think we're scheduled for the 2nd, 9th, and 16th. And I apologize, it's nearly $48 million for all three totals this year.
Oh, glad you caught that. When is the next, when is the next water case due?
That will be in 2024.
Thank you.
Additional questions from council? Seeing none, we are ready to go to the public again. Anyone here in chambers wishing to speak to the utilities appropriations?
I'll again extend the invitation for folks on Zoom. If you'd like to comment on appropriation ordinance 2202, please use the raise hand feature to let us know you'd like to speak. You can find that in your control bar under the reactions tab or the more tab.
All right. No hands flying up?
Not that I see.
All right, very good. Back to council for any final comments. Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. I will support this appropriation ordinance. Slang is "appord." But one thing that I do want to remind us, overall thinking, in particular with this budget, one of the things that I think about is, along with the utilities rate increase that's planned, and Director Kelson has explained the frequency of those, but let's keep that in mind. We've approved an ED-LIT increase. If it's successful, there will be a school referendum that will affect the citizens and what we pay in that area. There's been talk of a trash rate increase. Whether that happens or not is up for future discussion. Many of you, particularly those of us that own property, have, our property's been reassessed, which means there's an increase in our taxation fee. Each and of those in and of themselves, and I think individually, they're manageable, but I don't want us to ever forget the compounding effect when we have those multiple type increases. But I don't want us to ever forget the compounding effect when we have those multiple-type increases pretty much where they affect one another. I think we all understand, and I could give reasons, utilities were playing catch-up for a lot of infrastructure items that we probably should have dealt with some years ago. The school referendum, it is what it is. The previous referendum has now about to expire. So there's reasons why, but I also think while we're thinking about these type of increases and what they could do for our community members, that we always, always remember the impact that it has on our citizens, and particularly those that may be a little less fortunate financially. But I will support this "apport." Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. No further comments. We thank you, Mr. Kelson. And if I could please ask the clerk to call the roll on Appropriation Ordinance 22-02. Yes. Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
And Scambaluri?
Yes.
Thank you. Passes 900.
Madam President, I move that appropriation ordinance 2203 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second. Moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Mother clerk, please read.
Appropriation Ordinance 2203, Appropriations and Tax Rates for Bloomington Transportation Corporation for 2023. Your committee recommendation was due past 900.
Thank you.
Madam President, I move that appropriation ordinance 2203 be adopted.
Second. All right. Mr. Connell is joining us via Zoom.
Good evening. Nothing has changed in the budget since it was originally presented. Happy to answer any questions if there are any.
All right. Very good. Any questions for Director Connell? Or General Manager Connell? Yes. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Mr. Connell, just for the benefit of the public, could you remind us what the total budget request is? Thank you.
All right. Very good. Any other questions? Councilmember Volan?
Mr. Connell, could you give us a sense of... I know this is a little premature, but $35 million is an enormous increase from prior years. Do you have any sense at all of how much less the following year's budget might be? Is it going to be $35 million again? Or will it be... Is that reflecting capital?
The... So this year's budget's up 131%. I would anticipate if we're once again successful obtaining federal capital dollars, which we are going to aggressively pursue, that we would be somewhere around $30 million, hopefully.
Wow.
We have some aggressive plans to go after a significant number of federal dollars because they're available.
That's really encouraging, and I thank you for the info. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? And seeing no further questions from council, we go to the public for anyone on Zoom or here in chambers.
I will again offer folks on Zoom, invite them to raise their hand if they'd like to comment by clicking the Reactions tab or the More tab in your control bar, or sending a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to comment. And I see no hands shooting up.
All right. Very good. Back to council for any final comments? Councilmember Volan?
I just want to take... It's another opportune year to point out the dramatic impact that the local income tax is having on transit. I mean, we were used to low seven-figure... Low eight-figure budgets, I should say, high-seven-figure budgets, and now we're looking at a permanent... I mean, for all practical purposes, I think Mr. Connell's ambition is to keep the budget up at this $30 million level. This is the power that the local income tax could have with transit, where federal dollars can be leveraged with local dollars at a rate of four to one. So we're getting a bargain for this portion of the local income tax, and I am very excited about the future of local transit. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Rallo?
Yes, just following up on a question I had earlier in our budget hearings, and maybe it's of interest to Mr. Connell and your board, and that is, since we're heavily investing in electric buses, I wonder what kind of infrastructure would be required for it to be totally off-grid? In other words, we could... What sort of solar array we would need in order to harvest enough electricity to keep our buses running without any inputs? Whether that's even feasible, I don't know. But it would be interesting to... I mean, I know what happens in certain countries. I know European countries are powering a lot of their public transportation through renewable energy. So something to consider in the future. I don't know if Mr. Connell has any comment on that.
Well, one of the big challenges... One of the big challenges we would face is the actual size of our... The footprint of our property. We will be issuing an RFP later this month for engineering and engineering services to look at providing, you know, the best possible way to provide the electrical infrastructure for the charging system for the future electric buses. And the solar component will be a part of that process. So I'll be happy to share the results with you once that is complete... That work is complete.
Wonderful. Thank you. We're of one mind on that, it seems.
All right. If there are no further comments... Oh, Councilmember Flaherty?
Just a brief follow-up. Thanks for all your work, Mr. Connell, on the budget and all these exciting developments. I share Councilmember Rallo's... I'm sorry, Councilmember Volan's excitement about how transformative the local income tax dollars dedicated to transit are and have been and will be. I wanted to clarify a brief point. I share Councilmember Rallo's desire to get, you know, as much renewable energy powering the buses as possible. I think that's absolutely the direction we should be headed. But just want to clarify also that even under the existing grid in Indiana, it is substantially cleaner to run electric vehicles, because I think that's a point that I hear from folks in the community that, like, we're powering our vehicles with coal and therefore it's bad, and that's just not actually borne out by the facts. Union of Concerned Scientists have been studying this for years. Their most recent analysis found that the average new battery electric vehicle produces 50% less global warming pollution than comparable gasoline or diesel. This is true everywhere in the country, and they have analysis, including in Indiana, that shows that. And the other big point is that tailpipe emissions are a big deal. Ground-level ozone, particulate matter, nitrogen oxides that come from tailpipe emissions are, you know, a real driver of early deaths of folks living along especially busy streets and corridors. So there's really two substantial benefits to immediately switching to electric vehicles, both from a climate pollution and a local air pollution standpoint. I think Councilmember Rallo probably knows all that, but I just wanted to clarify it for the benefit of the public out of concern for, you know, folks thinking that might not be the case. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Councilmember Rallo?
Just to follow up and thank you, Councilmember Flaherty. I know you're very well-versed in that, and I think it's just... I just wanted to add that I think it's something worth considering that... And I agree with you. I concur on that. But, you know, in terms of full-cost accounting of what it takes to make a bus, to what it takes to mine lithium, what it takes, you know, all of these things need to be considered. But I think on balance, we're doing the right thing, and we need to go electric and for all the reasons that you stated. And so it's definitely a way forward, but, you know, it's complicated. So there's a lot to... A lot of things to understand as we go forward on it, and I know you... We will. So thanks.
It's the clerk. I do believe we are ready to call the question on Appropriate Ordinance 22-03. All right. And we'll start with Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
And Sandberg?
Yes. All right. 900. Appropriation Ordinance 22-3 passes.
Madam President, I move that appropriation ordinance 2201 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second. Moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. And will the clerk please read?
Appropriation Ordinance 2201, an ordinance for appropriations and tax rates establishing 2023 civil city budget for the City of Bloomington. Your committee recommendation is due past 063.
All right. Thank you.
Madam President, I move that appropriation ordinance 2201 be adopted.
All right. We hear the presentation.
Good evening. Jeff Underwood, City Controller. I apologize. I have a condition of, in the fall and in the spring, as weather changes, my voice gets very gravelly. I will try to speak up so you can hear me. I'm just going to be brief. We're presenting a budget inclusive of the property tax caps tonight of $129,435 and $299 across 34 funds. Again, this is not inclusive of utilities and the Transit Department. This represents an increase of $22.4 million, and the majority of those increases were in three places: the local income tax, economic development, $16 million; food beverage of $4 million; and housing development of $2 million. And again, the only change that was presented from August to the public hearing and tonight was an appropriation for reproductive rights of $100,000 that was appropriated. It's appropriated initially in the general fund and then was then gets appropriated and moved over to the Jack Hopkins Fund as well. So while it's only $100,000 of new spending, it actually increases the overall budget by $200,000. And with that, I will stop and happy to answer questions, and my fellow department heads are here as well.
All right. Thank you.
And you for your consideration.
Before we go to council questions, we do have an amendment regarding that additional $100,000. So if we could go ahead and hear that right now.
Is that acknowledging me?
Oh, yes.
Madam President, I'd like to move Amendment 1 to Appropriation Ordinance 22-01.
Second.
Second.
May I continue?
Yes, please.
This amendment would reduce the Jack Hopkins Fund, number 9508, Category 3, Other Services and Charges in the council's department budget by $100,000. The intent behind this reduction is to give explicit guidance on an emergency reproductive healthcare grant program proposed for 2022 and 2023. As is proposed in Appropriation Ordinance 22-04 for 2022, this amendment is meant to indicate that any such grant program for 2023 should be funded and administered by the Community and Family Resources Department rather than out of the Jack Hopkins Fund.
All right. With that, are there any questions regarding Amendment 1? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes. I suppose Councilmember... If Councilmember Scambaluri could explain further why she feels this amendment is necessary, I would appreciate that.
Sure. I'd be happy to, and I would also invite Councilmember Sandberg, who's cheered Jack Hopkins, to comment as well. Jack Hopkins historically has had a very specific pot of money with a very broad set of parameters. So depending on the needs in a given year, Jack Hopkins funds may respond to food insecurity or housing insecurity or healthcare issues or any number of things. It would be cumbersome at best and difficult to take $100,000 out of a Jack Hopkins and earmark it for one specific purpose. We don't typically do that with a pool of funds that is Jack Hopkins. Did I say that accurately?
Yes. This is basically just to make this cleaner, because this particular grant line is going to be administered by CFRD. And so rather than have Jack Hopkins be the placeholder for 2023, this just cleans it up to make it clear that that $100,000 needs to go to the proper department where they will have the mechanisms to be able to allocate this grant more efficiently and more appropriately. And I don't know if our council attorney, Mr. Lucas, has anything more to say about it, because we were asking you to help us clean this up to make sure that there was no confusion about where this amount of money was actually going to live and be distributed.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith, I'll just maybe ask to clarify is your question why this ordinance or this amendment is needed to ensure that the grant for 20... The grant program for 2023 is administered by Community and Family Resources, or why it's a good idea to have that department administer the grant at all?
Well, my question at this point would be, does this reduce the overall budget by $100,000, or does it just reduce the... Remove the transfer of $100,000 from the general fund into Jack Hopkins? Like, is the $100,000 still going to be there?
The intent, and Councilmember Scambaluri can confirm, the intent is just to remove the transfer into the Jack Hopkins Fund, to leave the $100,000 in the Community and Family Resources Department so that they would administer both the 2022 grant program, if that's approved through Appropriation Ordinance 2204, and also administer the 2023 program as well.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions regarding Amendment 1? Yes?
Well, I would like to ask Mr. Underwood if the way this amendment is stated, whether that is appropriate for maintaining that $100,000, but just through CFRD.
Yeah, that's correct, because, again, it's one of these double appropriations. The money, the funding's coming from the general fund, so we have to appropriate it in a department out of the general fund. So that was accomplished. And then the idea is with Jack Hopkins, that money that gets transferred as an expense to that fund, and then in order to appropriate and spend out of that particular fund, you have to have an appropriation of that. This amendment just reduces the overall budget and specifically the budget for Jack Hopkins by $100,000. So the budget, which had been increased by 200 because of this process of double appropriation, now like it's increased by $100,000. So it'll stay in the general fund, and it'll stay in CFRD, and they can administer those monies.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. If there are no other questions, we will go to the public on Amendment 1.
I will ask those on Zoom. If you would like to comment on Amendment 1 to appropriation ordinance 2201, please use the raise hand feature to indicate you would like to speak. And I see no takers.
No hands. So we are back to council for any kind of comment or to call the question. All right. I will please ask the clerk to call the roll on Amendment 1. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
And Rallo?
Yes.
All right. 90. So we are back to the ordinance itself. If there are any questions from council for Mr. Underwood or any of our other department heads? I see no questions from council. So once again, we go back to the public for the ordinance as amended.
I will invite folks on Zoom. All folks here in chambers are lining up. If you'd like to comment on appropriation ordinance 2201, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom, which you can find under the Reactions tab or the More tab in your control bar, or you can send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak.
Thank you. And if you would sign in and state your name, you will have three minutes to make a comment. Is there no clipboard up there?
There is a clipboard, but there is no pen.
Oh, okay.
Okay. I will sign in after I speak if that's permitted by the council. Evening. My name is Joseph Winia. I am a resident of the City of Bloomington, and I would like to speak in favor of ending the general subsidy funding of the Public Works sanitation budget as well as the rate increase proposed. So first, as Councilmember Flaherty had pointed out during the initial Public Works So first, as councilmember Flaherty had pointed out during the initial Public Works budget hearing, that there is a disparity between those who are contributing to the subsidy and those who are benefiting from it, which I agree is problematic. And it is indeed the city's responsibility to provide the waste collection services, and it does, and I believe it is the responsibility of those generating the waste and those receiving the service to fund it in a way that fully covers the cost of the service. But what I personally think is even more important is that in light of the current global environmental circumstances, hauling waste is not something we should be subsidizing and making more available. It's something that we should be penalizing and struggling and striving to reduce as much as we're able to. It's, it's currently considered a basic service, but the reality is that it represents an enormous environmental harmful impact in the form of energy emissions, pollution, and resources used to create all of the materials, additional emissions and fuel to transport the materials to final waste, to disposal, and then again, additional pollution and energy to landfill it. So to put it in numbers, in 2016, Monroe County disposed of two hundred and forty million pounds of waste. And if we assume an even distribution between the city and non-city populations, that equates to about a hundred and forty-four million pounds of waste produced just by Bloomingtonians. So if we break that down to a daily total per person, that is four point six pounds per person per day of Bloomington residents. So I would love to give you more up-to-date information, but it currently doesn't exist, which is a separate problem. But this is just the most detailed information available from a report that was conducted, the Kessler Study, on the waste hauling in Monroe County. So as a Bryant Park resident, I do benefit from the subsidy currently, but I'm still opposed to it because I don't believe that it is a logical use of the funds or a beneficial way to allocate them. So if anything, I believe those funds should actually be used to support an educational program to inform residents of just how damaging waste generation is and what we can do to reduce it. Thank you.
Thank you. And anyone from Zoom?
No, not that I see.
All right, and our next speaker.
Hi, Dave Askins with the Beat Square Bulletin. I have a version of the same question I asked before, which is what happens if the, if the council fails to pass this ordinance by the end of the month? So I believe that one impact would be that the property tax levy would have to be the same as it was last year, and there's really nothing that we could do to make up for that. And so that would mean foregoing forever about a million and a half dollars, I guess, for this year. So anyway, it would be good to get some confirmation of that. But as far as the other revenue, the extra revenue that we're seeing this year, all the money from the local income tax, for example, it's my understanding we would still get that. It's just that it would have to eventually be appropriated later. So that would also be useful to know because of what we would actually be foregoing the income tax. That's a big difference from simply having to later sort of fix it by appropriating it. And related to that, let's say, for example, the Ask Me contract comes back later, and the new salary ordinance is put in front of you. It would be useful to get a clearer understanding of what the actual options are. So obviously, if that's in the contract, you have to fix a salary ordinance that at least meets the terms of that contract, but what if you wanted to pay them more? Could you? You pass a salary ordinance as the city council, and you say, look, we're going to pay these guys more than what is in their collective bargaining agreement. And even if the mayor tries to veto it, you override the veto. Now you have a salary ordinance in place. It's the local law. It says this is what these folks are supposed to be paid. Isn't that possible, and if not, why not? Thanks.
Thank you. All right. If there is no further public comment, we come back to council for any questions or comments. Councilmember Volin?
I wanted to address the point made by the member of the public who spoke about the hauling of waste. I think it was spot on. Those who, I mean, the simple principle is those who generate waste should be paying for its disposal, should be aware of and responsible for the amount of carbon that it takes to make it waste. What, you know, one person's trash, another person's treasure, but that's a topic for another day. Even though the price per gallon is lower, the smaller a bin a household opts for, in other words, it's a progressive rate that forces people to think about how much, how much waste they generate. The program that we have now isn't quite as direct a lesson in cost as the orange trash tags were. The upside to us having gone to this program is that the city has control over how, more waste and how it gets disposed of. And if, for example, the city can find a shorter distance to haul the waste to, then we're more likely to do it than a private hauler would, who is just looking for whoever will give them the best tipping fee. So, you know, I wanted to call attention to that and to say that this is the biggest reason why we should be thinking about reducing or ending the subsidy. Because we, I mean, we need to force every household that generates waste to think about their waste. And only at the municipal level, the public level, can we really influence those figures for the sake of our collective carbon footprint. Other than that, I think everything else about the app board has been discussed, so I'll be supporting it tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else with a final comment? Councilmember Smith?
I have a rebuttal somewhat of that. So here's how I think about it. The property tax pays fifty-three point seven percent of the forty-nine million dollars in general funds. So I would vote, or at least think, propose that what, what we're doing is we're actually, the property owners are actually paying for their tax, their trash to be picked up. So, so that's one thing in my mind. And the other thing is if we decrease the subsidy, we actually don't really slow much of the carbon footprint of that. We're going to run trucks around because we're still going to have to run the trucks around to pick up the trash. So even if the, even if the barrels get reduced some, it, it doesn't really do that much. And so, you know, do we need to reduce the property tax revenue? Do we need to give people a rebate? So I agree that we should spend less money on trash, and I agree we need to have less carbon footprint in the world. It's not that. It's, it's, it seems like it's, we're decreasing incentives for people in our town to own home in some funny way. And it's not really a great idea when sixty-nine or seventy percent of people rent in Bloomington. So the property taxpayers are paying for their trash to be picked up as they're actually paying fifty-three point seven percent of the general funds, which are funding the solar energy lights on in the park. They're, they're doing, they're helping fund the bicycle paths. They're funding so many great things, and this is, it's not as, just as easy as saying that's going to fix everything. So I'm going to bring something up that my colleague, Mr. Volin, has, has mentioned before about the orange stickers. We did that, and I hardly put any trash out during that time because it was so inconvenient to kind of deal with. So, you know, so maybe, maybe a way to come together with some kind of compromise thought is, okay, if we need to raise those costs, and I'm not sure we do, maybe we need to pay as you throw. And so that, that technology does exist, it does exist, and it may be more complicated and difficult, but maybe we need to do that so that we will truly reduce the waste stream, and that's a good thing. And we will also then reward people instead of punishing because, because negative reinforcements don't work very well, but positive reinforcements do. So maybe what we need to do is reward people by then their bills less, and they throw away less trash. And I think that would be a fantastic thing, and it would actually be quite consistent with our climate action plan and with our comprehensive plan. It would really fit in there. It would make us a very progressive, thoughtful city about how we're reducing our waste. And so that's, that's the way I view it. I, I, I don't think the process of just taking that subsidy away is really going to achieve what we're all thinking. And so, so I had to respond to that because it, it's, it's, it's been working around in my mind as well, and so, thank you very much, and thanks for your comments, Mr. Winia.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Volin?
I'll wait for a second round to anybody else who's going to speak.
I don't know. Councilmember Flaherty?
Not to get too in the weeds on this, just a few points. Everybody pays property taxes. We all pay property taxes. If you're a renter, your landlord is paying property taxes, actually twice as much. They're paying two percent in property taxes instead of one percent. If you're a commercial business, you're paying three percent. At least that's the cap. So everybody pays property tax. Renters, in fact, often pay more property tax. I own my home. I live in multifamily housing. I pay property tax. That all goes in the general fund. Only one portion of the city gets that benefit when it comes to a service that all of us use. I pay for trash service. I pay the full cost of trash service. There's no general fund subsidy available for people in multifamily housing. That's fine with me. I think I should pay the full cost of trash service. But I want to be very clear that this isn't like some, some subsidy from the general fund that only the people benefiting from it are paying into it. It's everybody paying into it. I don't know where we're going to land with all this stuff in the coming year or beyond, but it's really the, the social and racial injustice that's borne out in the empirical data with this that's, that's most bothersome to me. I'm sure we'll get into the weeds more in time. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, if there are no more comments from council, councilmember Volin?
Since Mr. Smith rebutted my comments, I thought, or at least commented on my comments, I thought I'd offer rebuttal. As Mr. Flaherty said, everyone pays property taxes, not just homeowners, so the fact that property taxes fund half of the general fund is irrelevant. What's more important is that, that property tax money could go to other things that the good homeowners of Bloomington could use other than a service that house, only households who benefit from it know is a bargain. And if they don't know it's a bargain, let me ask them to look into getting private hauling. The city's rates are a third of what private haulers charge. So no matter what we raise it to, unless they're astronomical increases, they're going to be a relative bargain to what it actually costs to dispose of trash. Another thing that Mr. Smith doesn't know, maybe because he hasn't looked at the numbers yet, is that in the five years that the modernization plan has been implemented, the amount of trash that the city has collected has gone up almost sixty percent. Why? The answer is because back in the days of the orange tags, people would often, in an effort to avoid having to pay per bag, they might find, or a can, they'd find another way to dispose of their trash. They'd take it to work. They'd slip it in somebody else's can. There's a lot of other reasons why people did it. But we're collecting, you know, quite a bit more trash, and there's an expense to getting rid of it. I've been pursuing pay as you throw since the plan to, the announcement of the plan to modernize sanitation was floated by the administration. I got strong pushback from Mr. Wason to Public Works. Only recently have I learned why I've gotten pushback, and it's not because they're not interested. It's because the plan had problems, and systemically, it's not really possible. I looked specifically into pay as you throw. I still want to see it happen, but they didn't think of everything five years ago. And we're still trying to, to fix the emergent problems that came when we converted to a completely different system. So this is not a critique of Public Works, and I have been critical of Public Works before, but, you know, it's a bit facile to say we should do pay as you throw without looking into details. The very details that the administration has headaches over every day, that they're trying, they're trying to solve these problems. But I think it requires the cooperation of councilmembers like us, who represent people who may not be aware of these details. At the very least, we should make sure that they are aware of the details of what it costs and, and the, the impact that our assumptions are having on the formation of a budget. So like with all due respect, I would suggest that Mr. Smith join me in, in, in helping analyze the shortcomings of the modernization plan from five years ago so that we can. I mean, just the efficiencies we could get out of improving the plan ought to reduce the deficit a great deal. So again, with that, I'm going to be supporting this budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I, I look forward to further conversations about the sanitation budget. It is, the fiscal, fiscally responsible thing to do would be to increase rates, to cover at least the increase in costs. And we may need to go to, to a reduction in service, and that, you know, if it's every two weeks instead of every week, I think that, that could lead to waste reduction on a household level. But since we're, that's just a very small part of this whole budget, I wanted to express my support for, for several things and overall focus on sustainability in this budget. We have more than one point six million dollars to directly fund the Climate Action Plan implementation. We have almost four million dollars to support public transit, as we've seen. That will come from ED Lit funds, which will be passed through the civil city budget to the Transit Corporation. We have an allocation for affordable housing and the tune of one million dollars. We also have a commitment to convert one city parking lot, surface parking lot, to affordable housing in the coming year. I appreciate the changes to the leafing program where we're phasing that out so that through education, people can learn to process those leaves onsite, although we still will have bagged pickup. The, the other things that the ED Lit makes possible are also exciting as far as an economic equity fund and investments in local foods networks and the arts. And a big chunk just going to keeping up with the cost of supplies and hopefully boosting salaries beyond the five percent for the non-union salaries as well. So the ED Lit is a huge part of this budget, and I'm, I'm pleased that my colleagues and I and the mayor passed that earlier this year. And I think this, these plans for next year are very exciting, and I am happy to approve the budget tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. I don't want to thank everyone for participating in administration, robust conversation with our council members. A couple of things that I think about, community good is one of the terms that I think about, and I want to know how we all see that. How do we all see community good? And I know there's nine of us up here. We may see it nine different ways. So that will, I hope, lead to deeper conversations in the future. I mention community good because we've heard the word transformative hundreds of times during this process. And I think that is an appropriate word for what this particular budget can do. One of the things I wish I'd heard a lot more of was the word innovation. And we've talked about it. I still like to see many more innovative results as we move forward, but I forward, but I think that's almost as important as transformative on how you get to where we're going. Again, you know, I'm just a college grad guy who worked hard. I don't know a whole lot. I just know that I help pay the city bills, along with all of our constituents. We talk a lot about trash, and that does require further discussion. I think we all want to reduce trash, the amount that's going into the landfill, the carbon cost of doing all that. I think that's what we all want. The reality of the matter is, again, from basic city service, and I think I like that essential term. I might start using it myself, essential city services. But one of the things is, you're talking about reducing rate waste. You have to talk about the packaging of products. That's one of the things we have to discuss. I can't throw away less if they don't change what I buy and how I buy it. I mean, just think about that. I mean, so it's bigger than just us city Bloomington people reduce your little 2.6 pounds a day down to a pound and a half when I still got to get the packaging in the bacon and the stuff that we buy. So this is a bigger conversation and hopefully a bigger solution. Recycle. Has anyone besides me got one of those little notes from sanitation on top of your little recycled container? Just want you to know, we used to recycle this, but we don't recycle that anymore. Now, I know that is reflective of the market and how things change and all of that, but that's part of the waste reduction discussion. And it gets more and more expensive to do recycling. I mean, let's talk about that, too, at some point. Part of the trash increase is to cover some of the cost for recycle that we're charging nothing for, at least to the customers, but just something to think about. Are we going to pay at some point to have snow removed from my street? Hey, we're going to do some of these other innovative and transformative things. Let's just put everything on the back of us and give me my tax dollars back, and then we can talk about that. Are we going to charge people when they walk and use the beeline? What about folks who will participate in a school referendum and pay school levy but haven't, don't have children in school? What is the importance of that to our society? I'm not trying to compare that to trash pickup. I am trying to compare all that to community good and how I think we should be using our tax dollars. Pretty simple, I think. But all these will be deeper, hopefully more robust discussions in the future. We have to solve these, and I think we're well on the way of having those discussions. We're talking about trash and sustainability. One of the best things that I've heard, I don't know, in the last 30 days or so, was our own folks in talking about sustainability, how we're now approaching this regional approach. We're talking to people in other counties that we can do certain things and make the impact much bigger than just what Bloomington can do. And that's important to me, and I am so happy to hear or see that progress. I think, we could say a whole lot of things about the administration, but there's a lot of things that we ought to just say and then pat them on the back and say, thank you, because we're getting some things done. Some other things we need to work on. But sometimes let's appreciate some of the things that we're doing and able to do for ourselves. So we'll talk more later. We won't agree, all agree on trash rate increases and pickups. You know, I don't know, maybe I could just create a whole new landfill. How much less costly when we took it to Anderson Road instead of the Terre Haute? What's going to happen if we have to take it to Peru at some point? You see, this is all the big discussion that goes together. And for us to start parsing off these little things and, you know, I don't want that, but I'm okay with that. I mean, this is all what we do, the services that we as local government provide. And again, I look forward to talking about it and having deeper discussions as we move forward. Again, thank my colleagues, thank the administration, really thank the public for their comments. And I'm looking forward to 2023 if we can get through this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Seeing no further comments, we will wrap up by asking the clerk to please call the roll on Appropriation Ordinance 22-1 as amended. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
And Flaherty?
Yes.
And that passes nine zero. That concludes our budget meeting this evening. We may want to have a brief conversation about our council schedule coming up before we adjourn.
Just a reminder, the council has a regular session scheduled for next Wednesday, the 19th, where you'll resume your regular course of business. Also a reminder, please stick around after tonight's meeting so that the clerk can collect your signatures. Two of the items you've passed tonight require all nine of you to sign, so please, please work with the clerk to get that completed tonight. Thank you.
Very good. And with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right. Thank you very much.